Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.
The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with in that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 hours in advance. On May 22nd, 2014, notice was mailed to the Courier Post and the Aldea. Notice was also posted on the bulletin board located by the reception desk at the central office in all school buildings bulletin boards within the district. At this time, we stand to pledge allegiance. At this time, we are going to go into closed session. The time should be 5:30 and we will be back in one hour by 6:30. We will be returning. Ms. Robinson?
I'm going to do roll call first. So Ms. Atwood?
Here.
Mr. Brito Bueno? Ms. Burley? Ms. Coscarello?
Here.
Ms. Minir? Minister Wasim Muhammad?
Present.
Mrs. Reyes Morton? Ms. Wilson?
Present.
And Ms. Blackshear?
Absent.
I'm just going to call student representatives as well. Maggie Battle? Wanda Haley?
I think some are in here.
Kadija Jones? Camera Carter? Nyla Johnson? Tamir Branch? Ronnie Lou? Roni? Yalexa Lopez?
Is she here?
Leguilarios?
I'm here.
Okay. I'm so good. In accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, the Board will need to go into closed session to discuss the following topics: Union negotiations, litigation, matters involving individual privacy, safety and security, and student matters that must be kept confidential by law; matters of personnel; matters of attorney-client privileges.
Motion to go in close.
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
And we will be back at what time is it?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to be back at 6:30.
6:30. We'll be back at 6:30. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
I will entertain a motion to come out of close.
Roll call. Ms. Atwood?
Here.
Mr. Brito Bueno?
Present.
Ms. Burley?
Yes.
Ms. Coscarello?
Are we following a motion? Yes.
You're coming out of close.
Ms. Minir? Minister Wasim Muhammad? Mrs. Reyes Morton?
Yes ma'am.
Mrs. Wilson? Ms. Blackshear? All in favor to come out of close?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Superintendent Peymar Rhanefur.
So I'm going to be moving down to the podium and the Board members will move down to the first two rows, including the student Board members.
As many of you all know, one of our students recently passed away from gun violence over this past weekend, Jamir Bullard. And I just wanted to begin the meeting by acknowledging the incident. It's a tragic loss for this community. I've spent a lot of time personally with a lot of his peers, staff at both schools. Jamir was at Woodrow Wilson, the Camelot Program, and transferred over to Camden High School recently. And even if you were to talk to our student advisory board members, they'll tell you that they knew Jamir and he was really well-regarded amongst his peers. And again, it's a tragic, tragic loss for this community. We sent crisis counselors to both Camden High and Woodrow Wilson first thing Monday. I want to acknowledge Gary Frazier, who was amongst the first people to call me and advocate for the crisis counselors. So I want to thank you, Gary, for your advocacy and your care for our students. And there's a lot more I could say about Jamir and the impact he had on this community. And this is not soon. It was just a few, a couple of weeks after one of our other former students, Tamir Bright, was also killed by gun violence. So I would like to ask one of our Board members to come up and say a few words as a longtime resident at Camden and someone who has been leading the National Youth Forum here on behalf of the city, Minister Wasim Muhammad, just to say a few words on behalf of the advisory board.
First, I would like to thank the superintendent for allowing me the opportunity to talk about the tragic death of one of our children. And whenever we see that, and on behalf of the advisory board, pardon me, advisory board's vice president here, Ms. Martha Wilson, I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to say a few words to our community. I have my sons standing here with me because it seems as though in our community that we have lost the value for human life. And just to bring my children here, who my son, my eldest son, who was a graduate of Camden High School a few years ago, and my two younger sons who attend our school here in Camden on Haddon Avenue, just as a reminder to our community, but specifically the men in our community, that we have to step our game up. You know, being a former athlete here in the city of Camden, one of Turner's burners in the eighties of those great high school years of Camden basketball, and this young man who was a promising athlete, that you hear so many people talk about the promising future that he had, is kind of disheartening to me because imagine, not only the fact that you might be burying one of your children, but imagine if I didn't have the opportunities that I had in Camden to give back to what Camden has made of me. You know, I had the opportunity to go away to play major college basketball, and that was wonderful. And although we were in a conference where, you know, Tim Hardaway and, you know, the great UNLV teams was there, it made me think about a little more academics then. Because when you leave those opportunities and you come from Camden City, you know, you were the man where you were at. But once you go abroad around the country, you know, it gets a little difficult and tough. But that opportunity gave me the opportunity to come back and give so much to Camden to have an opportunity with athletics and sports to go away, represent this city, represent Camden, and come back and give to the community that you see me giving to the community there on Haddon Avenue in Camden. And as an advisory board member here appointed by our wonderful mayor here in the city of Camden, Mayor Dana Redd and her staff, particularly Ms. Novella Starks Henson. I want to talk real quick about the National Youth Forum. The National Youth Forum is a violence prevention that deals with cradles to colleges and cradles to careers that stem from the president's office of President Barack Obama, his attorney general, the outgoing attorney general, which was one of the first, which, not one of the first, the first black attorney general here in the city and in this United States. This National Youth Forum is an opportunity for us to give back to our youth, us to give back to our children. Through the National Youth Forum, they have some wonderful things. And as I talk about this National Youth Forum, if I may, Superintendent, I'm going to go back and forth as advisory board member, and I'm going to go back and forth as just a brother in the community that see a lot of the misfortune that goes on in our community. We're asking the men in our community to stand up. These are our children here in the city of Camden that you see that's leading some of the statistics. They say one-third of the murder rate in Camden and the violence is done by our youth. I ask you the question, where are our parents? And to the mothers out there, we know sometimes it can get rough, a part of the National Youth Forum through the Cure for Camden and the MALL program that's launched from the mayor's office, and so many other great programs. Some of those programs are about connecting with other great organizations here in the city of Camden to give parents, because you know Camden has young parents, to give parents an opportunity to get the outreach that they need. Now, born and raised in Camden, we see sometimes the bickering and arguing that we do. When we do that, we emulate that to our young children. So as we see some of these gangs coming up, you know, there's an old scripture in the Bible that says that you can tell a tree by the fruit it bear. Well, we can't look down on our young people and their gangs when we get in our own gangs in the policies and politics here in the city of Camden. When we are gang-related or gang-minded when it comes to religion, when it comes to politics, when it comes to community organizations, this organization won't support that organization, that organization won't support that organization. Well, we're asking you, our youth are dying. And what they see emulated to them is the confusion as us as an adult. So I'm asking you, the mothers who are struggling, to seek outreach because you've been doing a wonderful job there, many of you by yourself. As you see nationally what's going on across the country, you see that there was a mother on CNN that went up and snatched her child away from that rioting. That seemed like the mothers of the old mothers that we grew up around here in Camden, that when the mothers was connected in community and they saw that if the child down the street was acting a fool, as we say, that mother stood up in the community. That mother stood up. And to the men who are in the community, we can't continue to misuse and abuse the act of family, that we are responsible for our sons. I have my eldest son here. He'll tell you, and if you could have this in a sidebar conversation as I conclude, and I don't want to be too long, but I definitely want to be a little strong. When he was growing up in Camden and we were living there, I told him if I see you on a corner doing some illegal activity, you don't have to worry about the Camden City Police or the Metro Police. He'll tell you that, he probably is going to smile when I say that, that he would wish that the Metro Police showed up. Because if anybody's going to go to prison, I'm going to go to prison or die trying to save the life of my young child. We're asking men to stand more up in the community, to stand up more like that. And how we, and what we do to emulate that to our children of community, when they see some of us, when we disagree with each other, sometimes when we act, we got to remember the children turn the channel. They see us, they see how some of us act, that we, so when they disagree and their young minds is growing, you know, in psychology, we say, you know, that youth minds, their brain has not developed to a point where there's though they could understand civil disobedience or civil disagreements. So they act on what they see in our community. So I'm asking the men in our community to stand up. Take right to your family, take right to your children, and our women are dependent on us. We can't go along and bring up the old mentality of what we think about being a leader is. A leader is involved in the community. Isn't that the role of a father?
That's right.
A father's a leader. A father is an example. As you see my sons, I have a suit on. If I want my sons to follow my example, they have a suit on too. But if I had my pants slugging and my drawers showing, then more than likely they will be looking as I look. So we have a responsibility as men in our community, we have a deep responsibility, but the first responsibility that we must unite together. So the National Youth Forum is an opportunity through the mayor's office to connect all of the great organizations that's doing great work and have been doing great work in Camden City for years, but we're a gang mentality. And no wonder another mother is burying her child again. Thank you, Superintendent, and I hope that my message touched your heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Wasim. If we could, a brief moment of silence for both Tamir Bright and Jamir Bullard.
So it's hard to transition from that topic, but if there's any way to transition, it's to share some very exciting news, the school district and the Wiggins School community. So some of you all may have heard that at the Wiggins School, Ms. Kelly Wharton Davis was named the South Jersey Magazine Teacher of the Year Award, and she's actually seated here on the front row. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Wharton Davis has been with the district for 27 years, started her career as a paraprofessional and then a computer aide, and for the last 13 years as a teacher at Wiggins. And this is a picture where myself and the principal surprised her in her classroom. And the student you see there is Adriana Hernandez, who nominated her for the award. So I'd like to welcome her up to the stage, Ms. Wharton Davis.
This is for you, Mrs. Murray. So first of all, I want to say good evening to the superintendent, to the audience, to the board members. Thank you for acknowledging my accomplishment. It has been a great year for me for being nominated as Wiggins Governor's Teacher of the Year as well. And then beginning of March, I found out I was nominated as South Jersey S.J. Magazine Top Teacher. So it's been a great year. I'm very elated for both of these accomplishments because my first-year teacher was very rough I lost my mother and my grandmother my first year teaching at Wiggins. But because of working with great colleagues such as Mrs. Murray, who is a wonderful leader, I made it through. Also with the support of my family, I would like for them to stand up for my family that came out to support me tonight. Family, I would like you to know that you are my inspiration and you get me through each and every day. Mrs. Murray, I would like you to know that I appreciate you for having faith and confidence in me and for trusting me to be a leader at Wiggins College Preparatory Family Lab School. Please stand up. So again, to my family and Mrs. Murray, I thank you all for coming out tonight. The highlight of my day, I was in tears at work because my co-teacher surprised me with a party for becoming Teacher of the Year and for being nominated as South Jersey Top Teacher. Well, I had a visit from Canada today because I belong to Classroom Champions, which we are trying to expand in Camden. Well, I didn't know about this party. So they planned it while I was in Canada a week ago. So in closing today, I would like to read a card that one of my kids wrote to me. And this card, out of many, I have 26, but I chose one to read tonight because it's like a poem. "A smile so pure on a child's face, a twinkle in the eyes of a teacher. Big, dark, chocolate eyes light up the sky in my world. A tiny smile upon her face makes me see the joy in life. A heart so big should be cherished with love, joy, and care. I know her name very well, when it echoes through my ears is Mrs. Wharton Davis." So I thank you all again and have a blessed night.
Congratulations. All right, so a few district updates, and then we'll get into the district highlights, and then we'll go back up on stage. Really quickly on family engagement, I think a lot of you already know this with the recent announcement of the Renaissance School Partnerships. We wanted to make sure that we called all families, notified each and every one of them, whether by telephone call or knocking on doors and speaking with families in their living rooms, clearly acknowledge what I'm sure we'll hear later during public testimonies, that there are anxieties out there, but can also tell you that so many of these conversations have gone very positively. And I want to thank our team, almost 50 people have been working around the clock from March 26th to April 17th, to knock on doors and to make phone calls. So we are now up for our quarterly update on our strategic plan. So for those of you that are regular attendees here, you'll know that every three months we provide an update on our strategic plan, which has five fundamental promises, which we'll go through here in a moment. And so I'm going to share with you over the last three months where we made progress on that strategic plan. So Promise One, to ensure that our students are safe inside school and in their commute in the morning to school and the commute home after school. We recently partnered with Rutgers University to provide professional development and training for our district security officers. In addition to that, thanks to leadership of Anthony Bland, who runs school security for us, he is leading the way for a national research forum that's dedicated to bringing new technology to improve safety in our schools. So that is Promise One, student and school safety. Promise Two is about improving the quality of our facilities. We have already talked to you all about the Camden High renovation project. Most recently, Mastery Schools was approved and has now begun the construction process for their new facility in Kramer Hill on the corner of State and River. So they've begun the process there. And I think most everyone here is already aware of the announcement to significantly renovate a number of our, four of our existing district schools. Promise Three is broken up into two strands. The first is on student support. And as it relates to student support, we're excited to tell you that we have launched a district-wide initiative to work alongside families to review all IEPs to ensure that every child receives the supports they need. This is actually something that technically speaking should be happening every single year. And what we discovered was that for quite a number of years now, we had not properly conducted those evaluations. Now, in certain cases, we have, where you have very active families that have pushed the district over the last several years, you have done that. But we haven't comprehensively conducted this analysis. And what this will ensure is that parents' voices are being heard first and foremost, and that the students' needs are being met. And where they're not being met, we will then, of course, change course and ensure that those needs are being met. And in other instances, a student's development is no longer in line with what the IEP is calling for. So there are various changes that we can make, and so this is something that is now underway. We've now reorganized the bilingual education services to decrease multi-grade bilingual classes. So we felt as though we had too many multi-grade bilingual classes. So in some instances, you'll see grades three, four, and five all in one classroom. And so what we want to do is ensure that the third graders have their own setting, fourth graders their own setting, and fifth graders their own setting. So we are looking to decrease that number. And then thirdly, we are more intentionally focusing bilingual education to ensure English-language learners have the support to master both English and their native language. What we've noticed is that a lot of times for the non-native speakers, they get a lot of support in speaking English, and they lose that support for their native tongue, and they oftentimes regress in their native tongue. So this is our effort to make sure that they are receiving support for both languages. The second part of Promise Three is great teaching and learning. And so we have announced two major initiatives, one of which I think everyone is pretty familiar with already, you know, with the transformation of some of our schools in great need. In addition to that, at Camden High and Woodrow Wilson, for our two large comprehensive high schools, for ninth and 10th grade, the students will receive more intensive literacy and math supports to ensure that, you know, they are caught up by the time that they are juniors and seniors and hopefully on their way to receiving a college diploma, or a high school diploma, and then making a choice to either enroll in college or find a meaningful job. And unfortunately, a lot of our students right now are falling significantly behind by the time they arrive in ninth grade. Promise Four, serving our families. So service orientation and creating an ethos and culture of service. We hosted our first annual high school fair, and this was an event that was geared towards our families. This was an event that was intended to ensure that all of our families had as much information when it came to the high school selection process for their students. It was well-attended, over 500 middle school students and families joined us at that fair. And so in addition to that, we recently announced a new Camden Parent Partnership, and this will be at the Croc Center. Our strategic plan calls out the creation of four family, or I should call them parent centers. I think the formal name is Camden Parent Partnership. So we have a stated goal to create four, and we just announced recently the second of the four Camden Parent Partnership sites, this at the Croc Center, which will be a community-based resource for all families and students. I'll quickly mention, by the way, we, as part of this Camden Parent Partnership, we have a scholarship program for 250 families to receive a scholarship to become members at the Croc Center. And so far, we have not received as many applications as we would like. So for anyone that is interested in applying, please make sure to reach out to our staff here today, and we'll make sure that you know how to get your hands on an application because your odds just got a lot better winning the scholarship. So we want to make sure we get as many scholarship applications as possible. Thirdly, we recently announced the release of our school information cards, which are on our website, and they're also part of the high school and family guides. The guides are intended to support families as they make choices for the next school year. And on our website, you can find the school information cards for all of our schools. And I think it's important to note that the school information cards tell us what we already knew about our schools as of today, which is there are still, there's still a lot of work to do, but at the same time, there are bright spots across all of our schools. So if you look at the school information card, you'll really see all of that information, where there are areas of improvement, but at the same time, what after-school partnerships are thriving, you know, what information that parents are really looking for as it relates to the extended school hours, the after-school programs, and in some cases, the morning programs. the morning programs that are available to students and families. And Promise Five is about ensuring that our central office continues to do more, but in a leaner fashion. And so we are continuing, whether it was a part of this budget process or last year, to reduce spending and to tighten the fiscal controls there to balance our budget and make sure as much money goes down to the school level as humanly possible. So I mentioned the school information card launch, and this happened just last week. This is the website, to the extent anyone would like to see the school information cards on the website. We received a lot of positive feedback as far as how user-friendly it is, but let me tell you, it is a lot of information. You're probably not going to take it all in in one sitting. But I do think that the information is pretty comprehensive and a lot of it was driven by parent feedback. We held a number of different community meetings to make sure that you helped design it. And some of the new features that parents had us add in was, for example, the dress code and what the actual uniform colors are for schools. So it has information such as uniform colors and at the same time, it has a whole host of other information such as the special education services that are offered at that school, and again, the after-school partnerships and the athletics program. So there's a lot of information there in addition to, of course, the academic performance. We want to give you guys an update on pre-K registration. You all know that we've, since I was appointed, have been keenly focused on enrolling more students into pre-K. And I'd like to welcome the head of our early childhood department, Katrina McCombs, to give you all an update on where we are with pre-K registration. Ms. McCombs?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Superintendent, and also thank you to the advisory board for the opportunity just to share a little bit about what is happening with regard to our preschool preregistration campaign for the 2015-16 school year. We are excited, we are happy, and we are looking forward to doing whatever we can to make sure that we're fulfilling the Camden Commitment vision of enrolling as many preschool students from our universe into our programs. So I just have a few slides, just want to share with you a little bit about some of the updates with regard to our pre-K registration efforts. So during the week of April 13th through 17th, we kicked off our pre-K registration campaign, and we also began to spread the word about kindergarten as well throughout our community and through our neighborhoods. 633 pre-K students were pre-enrolled for the 2015-16 school year. And that number will have a little bit more relevance and significance once we share a little bit more of the information and the data that's forthcoming. During the same time last year, 621 pre-K students were enrolled at the same time. So it's a slight increase, but we'll take any increase that we can get. And we are pushing and driving to make sure that we are able to enroll and get the word out to as many of our families as possible about pre-K. The information was shared with families through many different ways. We, each year, we put forth an aggressive mixed media campaign. So listed here are some of the different ways, some of the different ways that we spread the word about pre-K. On the radio, posted billboards are located throughout the city, TV stations, on our own district TV station, community outreach flyers, and also through collaboration with family workers, community, community school coordinators, clerk, and our early childhood staff. We actually go out door-to-door, knocking on doors, talking to people at neighborhood bodegas, anywhere we find people, churches, it doesn't matter, we want to just get the word out about pre-K. So the 633 number again just highlights the total number of pre-K students that are registered for next year already during the week of April, during that week of April 13th through 17th. And our admission is ongoing, so it has not ended. That was just a kickoff. Sometimes our families and community members think that after the spring roundup period, we can't register any more students. That is definitely not the case. We will take you all the way up until every single slot is filled. These students are enrolled not only at in-district schools, but also at our private provider locations. So there's a variety of different locations where students can be enrolled for pre-K programs. And this number will continue to increase as we continue to drive our preregistration The next slide here just shows you, again, it further highlights our mixed media campaign, but also the varied ways that we try to reach out. We don't just rely on flyers that go home to spread the word. We don't just rely on our billboards or on the radio station. But again, this just highlights and depicts the very, the numerous and varied ways that we try to get the word out. So we found that our top three ways of getting the word out for pre-K is through schools and centers. The second top is through families and friends. Word of mouth is always the best way to share about the benefits of the program and also through flyers. So this information is important because it helps us to figure out, okay, how do we strategize our efforts? What types of vehicles do we need to use to continue to make sure that we get the word out in ways that are working? So this helps to further our strategic push to get information out. And the next slide just highlights again some of our findings. So when you look at our current school year, the 2014-15 school year, our enrollment stands now at about 2,477 students. To give you context for that, we have about 2,600 total slots that we had to fill this year. So this still remains the highest number of students that we have registered in pre-K throughout the history of our pre-K program. That has grown from year to year, and 96% of all of our slots are filled. So that's something that I want to underscore because that's not a light thing. It's something that should be celebrated and highlighted because that means that we're reaching more and more of the universe of pre-K students. But that 96% number, for clarity, represents the number of slots that are filled to date. In looking at the 2015-16 school year, which is to come, we have 1,729 students who are already preregistered for next year for pre-K. And that is significant as well. So we have next year, for context, 2,700 slots that we have to fill. So again, that lets us know that at this time, we have 1,729, but from now until every slot is filled, and especially throughout the summer months, months when most of our parents register, we know exactly how many slots are available. And we also know what locations, whether they're private providers or in-district schools, that those slots that are open are still available in. This number, 1,729, I want to be very transparent, represents three-year-olds transitioning to a four-year-old program, also students that are registered during the open enrollment period or the aggressive campaign period that we referred to earlier, and also additional students that have enrolled after the period. So to date, those are the numbers. So please spread the word, help us about pre-K. Compared to our enrollment numbers at the same point last year, we are still showing an increase overall in the number of slots that are filled at this time. So when we look at our comparative data, that is going up. So we want that trend to continue. So we'll continue to drive those efforts. And finally, almost done. Not yet. Finally, almost, I'll be out of your way. But finally, with regard to pre-K registration, next steps, we are committed to ensuring that more available seats are filled with three- and four-year-old Camden students. That is still our commitment. So we will look forward to creating a centralized registration and enrollment system that can occur over the summer months, so parents have an easier way, a one-stop shop, so to speak, for where they can register their students. And more information will be shared out with the community. Finally, the Office of Early Childhood will continue to actively and strategically recruit until all slots are filled. I want to underscore that again, and we will continue to schedule outreach days. So we did schedule outreach days during the month, during the week of April 13th through 17th, but we will continue to do that and continue to reach out until we fill our seats. I think I have underscored that enough. We have 1,000 seats left, so anyone who's interested, please contact the Office of Early Childhood Education if you would like to have your student, your grandparent, your neighbor, registered for pre-K. Thank you so much for this space.
Ms. Gossman?
Yes.
Do you have a sense of how many of the 2,477 students decided not to register for pre-K?
Out of the 2,477, that's a total number. So when we're looking at that number, we have three-year-olds who are moving on to four-year-olds. So those students are automatically moved up. At this point, we, we don't know for sure why students may not have pre-enrolled their students next year. And if I'm not answering your question, please let me know because I think I'm jumping from last year to this year. Yeah.
So if the parents decided not to continue their student enrollment, how's that looking going?
So there, there have been, with the changes that are going on in the district, and some parents have expressed to our community parent involvement specialists and our social workers in preschool, very few, a minimal number of parents have expressed that they would like to wait until they can get a slot at a school that they really want to go to. So for instance, if they are looking for a slot at Elra Rutgers, which is affiliated with Leap Academy, some parents may choose to wait until they get that slot in order, that spot, in order to register their children. It's minimal. Yeah, it's, at this point, it's minimal, but we will keep our eye on it, and that's something that we look at. You're welcome. Are there any other questions? Good. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. McCombs. So real quick, a few district highlights and we'll go up and take questions on this and the business items. Veterans, there was a science fair, which went really well, was organized by the students with support and supervision from Ms. Foster May and Mr. Gonzalez, Clayton Gonzalez, the community school coordinator. So shout out to veterans. HB Wilson and Wiggins received some support from Camden High students through a partnership with the county. So for Earth Day, a few Camden High students here, as you can see in the pictures, partnered with the younger students at Wiggins and HB Wilson to lead a lesson on environmental Chanel Perry, I think most of y'all probably remember Chanel Perry, right? So to no one's surprise, she is playing as well in the ACC as she did here at Woodrow Wilson. And so she was named the Clemson Women's Basketball Team's Newcomer of the Year and the Most Improved Player on her team. So she started as a freshman. Creative Arts Morgan Village, this is the latest announcement of all the awards that they're winning. So the, the event that was held most recently on April the 17th was the Heritage Festival Choral Competition in Newtown, Pennsylvania. And so big congrats to the Middle, the Middle School Choir, the Concert Choir, the Treble All Girls Choir, the Barber Shop All Boys Choir, and the Show Choir, who all received And Sierra Irazari, Zachary Brown, and Crystal Cosme all received additional distinction, what they call here, the Festival of Gold Distinction for being top performers. And for those of you that had a chance to see the show this weekend, the musical Journey Show at Creative Arts Morgan Village, all three of them performed and did fantastically. So let's give them a round of applause as well. And winding down here, this was also a pretty neat distinction for us at Woodrow Wilson. Destiny Truitt was in a statewide competition that was called New Jersey Shout Down Drugs. And so she submitted an original song and was a finalist in the county. And so she's actually going to be performing at the Camden Night Gardens on Friday evening. So let's give her a round of applause. And we're going to acknowledge our retirees once we come up on stage. Thank you all very much.
At this time, I will ask Ms. Felicia Reyes-Morton to read off our retirements.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Nothing is more deserving than retirement for the individuals who have dedicated and devoted their lives to teaching within the communities that make up Camden City. Wishing you and your family all the best as you enter into a new phase of your life. May you enjoy the extra time you'll be spending with them. And individuals are Wendy Arthur, teacher of Davis Elementary School, 26 years; Michael Brown, custodian Brim Medical Arts, 26 years; Joseph Chip, teacher, Uriship Elementary, four years; Catherine Mate, teacher, HB Wilson, six years; James Smith, teacher, East Camden Middle, 22 years. So again, thank you.
At this time, I will entertain any questions from board members on the superintendent's report.
Can I make a comment? Questions? Are you asking for questions? Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to extend my appreciation to the superintendent and the administration for the wonderful packet they put out for the Family School Guide. And this was a massive amount of work and... This is a massive amount of work and I, you deserve a great deal of, of applause for, putting all your efforts into this. Thank you, it's very helpful.
At this time, we will now entertain any questions for Ms. Regina Robinson, Business At this time, we're going to entertain comments or questions from our student board members. Can you stand up, give your name and the school you're representing, please?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kadija Schubrick. I'm a senior at Brim Medical Arts High School, and sadly, this is my last board meeting. I have been the student representative for my school for the past two years, this year and last year. And I just want to take the time out to say that I appreciate having this experience. It's an experience like no other, I can definitely say. And I have been very enlightened during these past two years. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start out with some of the negatives and then want to end it off on a great positive note. Okay, so there are a lot of un-thin, unsaid things happening at Brim Medical Arts that can be resolved, but they won't be resolved if we don't have our administration or our principal there. So if you cut the head off of a dragon, then the body will die. So I just feel as though we need our administration and our leaders there so we can progress. We have other staff trying to step up and take on the responsibilities that, I can't say that are being felt to be met, but they can't do that, that's not their job, but they try their best to keep the school alive. And I just feel as though, as you can imagine, this can have a domino effect. So eventually, this can drag our school, but we flourish and we continue to thrive. So on the writer's side, I definitely can say I would like to commend our mark on the great progression we have had for the past two years, and I can only expect for our lunches to go and get better, basically. And another great announcement is, I'm elated to say that Brim's juniors, they had, went to Baltimore, but they went before the riot and they made it back in one piece. So I just want to say that. 100% of our seniors have been accepted into college, definitely. 85% are going to college, and the other 15% are either going to the Army or have jobs lined up after they graduate. And I just want to say how beautiful that is, because did not expect it much from Camden, but I mean, obviously, we can do great. And after this, we have, well, the seniors have an interesting rest of the year, we have seniorship, prom, and then we get to graduate. So I just want to say thank you for everything. This is my last time seeing me on stage, but I will be in the crowd the next year. Stop! Can I finish? I'm done.
Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Ooh, good evening. I'm not going to make my speech as long as Khadija, but my name is Rony Liu, and I'm a senior from Medes High School. This is also my last year at the board meeting, so I really want to say thank you, the board members, for allowing me to be a part of your team. It's a very great experience, it's something I never had before. I also want to say thank you to the CEA Camden Association Education for giving me a scholarship. I'm going to be attending the banquet in June, so thank you, guys, for giving me that scholarship. I just want to say, Medes has really taught me a lot, and it really has prepared me for college, so I want to say thank you for all the staff there at Medes High School for preparing me to get this far, and for me to be a leader for the next couple of years. Tell me to stop, but that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Larry Als from Woodrow Wilson High School. I am also a senior, and of course, this is my last board meeting. I'm just going to cut the chase. Some students placed a lot of posters for Jamir Bullard, which was a really close friend of ours. He was a great kid. We are also having a dress down this Friday to support his family for the funeral cost. We had a moment of silence this morning, which was really lucky of ours, some of our students were in tears, of course. I wanted to thank the superintendent for coming to our school to actually help everyone, to make sure everyone was okay. May 21st, we have a pep rally and a talent show, which is going to be really interesting and fun. We are getting ready for our second round of park for our ninth through 11th grade year students. Students are actually writing out for teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week, and a lot of our teachers have gotten their letters, of course, which was really good, that a lot of teachers were proud. Some of our homeroom representatives were talking to the principal, and they are actually getting ready for next year, which is really surprising for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To start off with, I'm not a senior, I'm a junior, class of 2016. I'm Camera, and I'm representing Creative Arts. To start off with, I have two concerns. We have problems with how to schedule our MAP testing, PARK testing, and finals, and our regular tests every week, and it's hard for our teachers to schedule it because it's all back-to-back, and we're being tested so much at the same time, and it's getting harder for the students and teachers. Secondly, freshmen, they don't have a math lab teacher, and I spoke about this the last meeting, but they haven't received one yet, and I hope they get one because they're not being graded or anything, and the sub doesn't know what to give them. On the other note, our school just had their last two performances of our Black History Show, as the superintendent said, on April 25th, and it was in success, and we're finally glad to be done with the show, but we had a good time doing it. Our jazz band won their state competition again, and we're proud of them for bringing back another gold medal. Our choir won their festival competition, and they're going to Poland in June for another And I want to say thank you for everyone on the board for letting me do this my junior year, and I really appreciate it, and I'll be back next year.
Good evening. Excuse my attire, I just came back from volleyball practice, volleyball's life. So first, at the big Medes High School, one of the best high schools in Camden, we have visitors from Holland that come every year, and they come and visit our school because they plan on building another big-picture learning school inside of Holland. And this happens every year. Another thing, support my volleyball team, we play Paw Six tomorrow at 4 o'clock, so please be there, support our Fighting Panthers at Paw Six. And finally, I have to leave some words for our graduating seniors. No tears, no tears. I've been honored to work with all my seniors. I look up to y'all, a lot of y'all have taught me a lot. These young, beautiful young ladies are smart, talented, and gifted. The tears! Khadija, thank you for just being Khadija. Rony, thank you for being there for me throughout school year, throughout school year, you've taught me a lot, I've learned a lot from you, I really do look up to you. That little quiet one in the corner, yes, she's quiet, but don't second-guess her. But overall, I've appreciated my time as a student board rep, and hopefully you'll see this face next year. I just have to get voted in again. But overall, thank you, I'm a Camden City School student, I have a full ride to Rutgers University as a junior. Thank you, public school, yes. And overall, I don't appreciate how people would doubt our school system, because I believe that we have one of the strongest school systems inside of the state. And that we can be one of the best with a little bit of teamwork, and I believe that we can do it if we all come together as one.
I did want to quickly respond to Camera's points about testing. We had a nice conversation about the level of testing. We also have a teacher roundtable that meets monthly, and we've had a number of discussions now about how in a lot of our schools, we're going from DRA to MAP to PARK, and this is actually a concern that I've conveyed to the commissioner. I very much share in this concern. One way we were able to alleviate what is clearly too much time being spent on testing was to eliminate the last interim assessment. So the fourth interim assessment, we did eliminate across all of our schools, and that is one small step. And so what we're doing is working with the state to see to what extent we can streamline some of the assessments next year, heading into the 15, 16 school year. So thank you all very much.
I also would like to thank each one of our student board members for your time and your service. It's meant a lot. You've made a major difference, and your input from Armark all the way to dealing with policy in this district, so you have made changes and you have been instrumental. So thank you, each and every one of you.
Any other questions? Yeah, I'll tee you up for that. So in accordance with the authority vested in me pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 18A 71-39, I approve this evening's superintendent's agenda report. Before we move on to public comment, I wanted to follow up on a question that was raised last month at our board retreat by former board member Sean Brown about the status of the board. And I've had a number of conversations with Mr. Brown, and it's a concern that I share in, and I appreciate that he's raised it here, and it's something that I think we should all be talking about as far as the future of the city and how it's governed. My main concern is the education of our students and the support that we give to our families. And so the matter he's raised is a legal one, so I'm now going to have our lawyer here comment on it formally.
I'll just generally say that, is this on? I'll just generally say that the Camden City School District has gone through some tremendous changes over the last several years. The administration, as well as the advisory board, has worked diligently and cooperatively together, in conjunction with their internal legal counsel as well as external legal counsel, to ensure that all decisions have been made in accordance with applicable laws, applicable ordinances, applicable procedures with respect to providing a thorough and efficient education to the children it serves.
Move to public comment.
The board will now enter into public comment section of this meeting. Rules for public comment. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to be heard on the agenda items in this meeting. Each person who has signed up to comment will have three minutes. You will be notified when your three minutes are up. You cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please remain at the podium and address all of your comments to the board president or the superintendent. Please conduct yourself in a respectful and courteous manner. For anyone whose comments or actions either harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. Also, if you curse, use vulgar language, or make personal attacks, we will provide you with a warning or end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes of comments. Members of the audience should also not interrupt the speaker at the podium. If you have any questions, please ask your questions during your three-minute comment period. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or his designee will address your questions to the extent provided by law. Thank you for your understanding. I will now begin by calling the names. I will apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name, and when I indicate that your time is up, we would appreciate it if you would cease your comments. Thank you. Our first speaker is Zulay Aguilar.
Good evening. My name is Zulay Aguilar, and I just wanted to thank the superintendent for giving us the choice to have a better education for our children. I recently took the tour at a master schools, and I saw the difference that my child will be provided with this new school system. I am thankful for this choice, and I approve the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sulika Serrano.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I just have some concerns because, I don't need that, I got a loud mouth. I'm sorry about that. But you know, I'm concerned because, you know, my kids are in special needs. What is going to happen with these kids, you know, once they do with the whole public school closing down? You know, these new schools that they're building, they're not built to handle these kids. Some of these kids that have this issue with autism, I don't know what's it called, but thank you. You know, these charter schools can't handle these kids. I was just in a field trip with these students not too long ago, and one of the students, yeah, he had issues, but you know, a lot of these kids have these issues, and this needs to be addressed because it's not just about, you know, what you guys are about, it's about these kids. These kids are our future, you know? These kids are our future, these kids are our future leaders. You know, they're going to be up there soon, and you never know what they're going to have. You know, we need to attend this because we don't want our kids to fall back. We don't want our kids to go to the streets. We don't want our kids to be selling drugs. We don't want none of that.
Pay attention.
You know? But at the end of the day, you know, it's a shame because these public schools, I come from a public school. I see teachers that have helped me, and I was a troubled child. I was a troubled child, I was always fighting. But at the end of the day, these teachers in these public schools helped me to turn my life around. Because what if they didn't help me turn my life around? Where would I have been at? I would have probably been in the streets, you know? It's not just about what you guys think, we got to look at these kids. We got to look at what's being done, you know? And I haven't seen nothing done. These charter schools cannot handle these kids. My child is an autistic child, and yeah, my child has three teachers in their classroom. Yeah, he's a tough child, but at the end of the day, these teachers will work every single way they can to help this child move along to first, to second, and I wish this would continue. I don't want public schools to close down, I want them to stay open. If we can improve the public schools, we wouldn't need these charter schools to come take their money, because that's what's being done. Their money, they're not being funded, they're being underfunded, and it's a shame, because a lot of these parents don't understand. You know, a lot of these parents done lost faith in these schools due to the decisions that are being made without them, you know? And I completely disagree with this, you know? If we could improve our public schools, we wouldn't need to be opening more schools and try to see if they can handle them. You know, we can do this, and if we get together...
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Valano. Ron Valano? Our next speaker is Ron Valano. Is Mr. Valano in attendance? Mr. Valano? Is that the Ron Valano? How you doing, sir? Long time no see. Could I just also please ask the audience, while we appreciate your applause and support for speakers you agree with, we would ask that you please kindly respect the speakers you don't agree with by not booing them. We would really appreciate that, thank you.
Good to see you again. I just have two points that I'd like to make before the superintendent and the advisory board. The first point is, I'd like to congratulate the superintendent on the presentation tonight, it was very informative. The second point I'd like to talk about is basically the action taken by the superintendent, since this is a state-operated district, and the actions taken to turn over these schools to private charters under the Renaissance Act. My question is simple, because the timing is not right. On March 23rd, you announced, Pavan, that these schools would be closed. On April 1st, at the State Board of Education meeting, based on questions from state board members to the commissioner, the commissioner had no idea what you were doing in Camden. On April 8th of this month, the certification came through that a deputy commissioner of education approved the authorization of making these schools charters, a renaissance. That's very nice and all of that, but quite frankly, it's illegal. There is nothing, there is nothing in the Renaissance Act that allows you to do what you're doing. This was told to you by the NJEA in my presence and your presence, this is a takeover. The children of Camden are not for sale, to be given away. But if that, if that's going to be the decision of this board, then we'll continue the legal process, because quite frankly, that is what's going on, whether this board knows it or not. Now, I understand politics is politics, but not when you're dealing with kids and then provide it to them. The second part of our question is, I just finished reading your comprehensive scores. It's pretty obvious to me that Camden needs a lot of improvement, and we've been willing to help you in that matter. But quite frankly, if we're going to portray scores, let's portray all the scores in the right light. If we're going to change curriculum in midstream, or have schools that tell me as their field rep that they have no curriculum, they're writing it, and that we have no organized plan, then basically, quite frankly, we're giving these teachers and these schools a raw deal. So why don't we try to level the playing field, and I think you'll get the results you're seeking. But right now, the way they feel, when they're battered every year by their failures, when they're battered every week by Renaissance schools that have no scores, I think this board is going in the wrong direction, but then quite frankly, you don't have the authority, because it's all tied up into the superintendent. I understand the trainers who are going to be controlling this, it's all political, that's why we're here. But when it comes to the education of the kids, that's the last thing that we should be doing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gary Frazier. Mr. Frazier, you're up. Our next speaker is Gary Frazier.
Good evening. So, guess I'll get right into it. Mr. Payman, I want to thank you for your timely response to the death of those two youth that we received when I called you asking for the grief counseling in our schools. So I will say thank you for that. Ask us all as a city to pray for those families, those youth that we have lost in our city. We ask for a continuance of support from this advisory board here to continue the process of helping our youth here in Camden. So, thank you. On to business. Mr. Payman, my first question is, where is the data that provides enrollment by disability classification for special education enrollment? I had, I was able to take a look at the educational law center's site, tracking data as I do normally, and I saw that was not there. Mastery in their first year enrollment, they failed to meet the enrollment projections for their first year of operation by 15% and also by 21%. KIP has 105 students, one above mastery. Mastery enrolled 59 special education students, 20 below the district's 8%, of English-language learners. So it appears to me that Mastery is just targeting our non-English-speaking residents to get their numbers. But, in a lighter note, I'm not going to go into too much detail, because I didn't have a lot to say tonight, but I think there's some more things that need to be said. So, this is still within my three minutes, and this is part of something that we have been doing. Rancha Dickerson, Sean Brown, and Keith Benson Jr. Come on down.
Mr. Frazier, if I'm not mistaken, the rules that we...
Still in my three minutes.
You can't...
It's still in my three minutes.
Sir, you cannot yield your time to another person.
We're not yielding to anybody. We're going to make a generalized statement. We're not yielding to anything.
Okay. I did mention in my introductory remarks that you cannot yield your time, sir. Are these individuals on the list?
Sean Brown.
Mr. Frazier, are these individuals on the list?
Thank you. I had written comments, but I want to, I'll make this brief. First, so thank you for the time. Thank you, Mr. Frazier, for allowing me to speak. This board, this advisory board, in 2013 voted for the latest round of Renaissance schools that were approved. Although you're an advisory board, you had the legal authority to vote for those Renaissance schools, and you did so within what you thought was your legal authority as an advisory board, although you infrequently vote, right? If you can vote for Renaissance schools as an advisory board, then it makes sense to the spirit of the law that you can also then vote to initiate the process for allowing the voters to decide whether they want, what we call in New Jersey, a type 1 or type 2 district, an elected board or an advisory board.
Mr. Frazier's three minutes are now up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Mr. Frazier's three minutes are up.
Thank you. So, this is my last, my last point.
Next speaker, please, Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown, you heard? Mr. Brown, you heard the instructions. The board has set aside a portion of this meeting for public comment. The rules were explicitly clear that each speaker gets three minutes and that each speaker cannot give away their time. So we acquiesced and let you speak. Your time is now up. We would ask the next speaker, and I cannot read this name. Is it Larry Zahn, is it? Larry Zahn, again, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing the name.
Larry Zahn, special ed teacher for, I forgot how many years already. It's been since a long time. I do have a comment. I was going to come up here and speak about something else, but something that you said, Mr. Payman, caught my ears, and I'm old, because I just want to make sure I heard this right. You said that you were going to look, or your administration was going to look at the IEPs and how they're written, and the goals and their objectives. Well, here's the problem with that, and make changes where they were needed. The problem with that is, whether you realize this or not, an IEP is a bonding legal document. It cannot be changed by law without the consent of a parent, the child study team, and the person who wrote that IEP, which means the teacher. So unless you're going to call every teacher in who wrote the IEP and ask them to change the IEP, is that what you're saying, when needed? Because my understanding is, the IEP is bonding. My also understanding is, I can see the whole process in this, because of those students that returned to Mastery, as Mr. Frazier so ugly said, 51 of them were special needs students. I have had five of those special needs students in my classroom throughout the year. Most of his parents come to me crying, say, "Mr. Zahn, we weren't included in the IEP process of Mastery." They were just thrown in an inclusion classroom. These were students with severe learning disabilities. So not only did they move back from Mastery, back to a public school, thrown into an inclusion classroom where they had completely lost, even with all the modifications that I, as a professional, gave them, but then they had to be moved again to another self-contained classroom where they actually belong. So I don't understand what you're saying. Maybe you need to explain it to me a little bit more in detail, how you plan to look over all these IEPs and make random changes in them. Thank you. I'll be waiting for your comment.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ariann White. Ariann White?
I'm addressing things that were misrepresented again at the last meeting. First, was a correction when someone, Mr. Payman Rahana-Frye tried to say that uncommon and KIP were the highest-performing charter schools in New Jersey, some of the best from, based on a Credo report. What's still being admitted from the report, so my parents don't seem to understand, is that report eliminated the 25% of the lowest-performing charter schools, and still, the public schools outperformed them in every major city in New Jersey. What also needs to be understood is, those charter schools typically, and why they're mentioning you're here in the Education Law Center, what's happening is because Education Law Center is filing the claim and a lawsuit against Mastery, uncommon, and KIP, because they traditionally, habitually, under enroll ESL students or, and special needs. If you happen to slip through, you are immediately processed out, and that's why there's such an influx back into public schools when the rooms are overcrowded. So you need to understand this. Next thing, what I'm confused about is, if it's an ideal setting for charter schools to have less than 20 to 1 ratio for teachers, and the top 10 of the private schools in New Jersey brag on every one of their websites that they provide this intentional small class setting to allow teachers the time to provide students with the individual attention they need to flourish and develop, why then, when the public school of the high need population gets to a 15, 16 to 1 ratio, where our teachers would have that time to allow them to flourish and develop, the classroom is closed? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alicia Rivera. Alicia Rivera? Okay.
Hi, my name is Alicia Rivera. I do have a special needs child. This is her eighth school. This is why I am, I do want to change. She goes to East Camden Middle, and that's a master's now, so I am proud, and I thank you for that, because now she's going to get the help that she needs. Thank you.
Again, can we, can we please ask members of the audience to please respect the speakers, even though you may disagree with their comments, they are respecting you. Please respect them. Let's maintain order in this meeting. Thank you.
Don't go there.
Don't go there, Gary. Don't shout at the speakers. Don't say to educate them. That's not fair to them. I treat you with the utmost respect. I acknowledged you there at the podium. I appreciate you. When you're shouting at speakers, that's a disservice to this forum. We are here to have a public dialogue. Quit it, Gary.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Our next speaker is Veronica, and forgive me, I can't make up the last name, San. It's S-A-N, I believe, and I can't read the rest of it. Santiago, I'm sorry. Veronica Santiago.
Ms. Santiago has a special needs student at Palm Point Middle School who's going into the ninth grade. Ms. Santiago has applied to Creative Arts Morgan Village Academy. She also applied to BRIM, and she also applied to Penn Tech, and she's been denied. So she's concerned because she doesn't, her child is scheduled to attend Woodrow Wilson High School, and she wants him to attend one of the magnet schools, and she's here to get help. She said he's been denied due to low scores, and that's why she's here fighting alone for the education of her son. She said even though she doesn't know English, but she's going to fight for her son's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kitora Golden. Kitora Golden? Is it Kitora Golden? I'll say it one more time. Kitora Golden. Okay. Next speaker, Josie Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board. I just want to start off, first of all, this sticker does not make me. I'm a parent for Gray Campus School, because I do have choice on where my son goes to. My son is a student at Malina, and I am a product of public school. I also, you know, I don't have, what I'm trying to say is that everything that's going on, I thought that we supposed to be all, you know, united, and, you know, I go for Catholic school, public school, Renaissance school, all the schools. We supposed to represent all of them. And, listen, listen. My son needs a better education, and Malina is not, they're not fighting hard enough. I've seen the difference, and my son's graduated from Woodrow Wilson, honor roll student, and then when he went to college, he didn't meet the criteria. So he was getting that from Woodrow Wilson. So my thing, saying thank you for everything, and I have a choice. That's it.
Thank you, man. Our next speaker is Namibia Burke. Namibia Burke, I'm just going to ask all speakers to please address your comments to the board and the superintendent, and again, ask the audience to please refrain from critiquing and commenting during the speaker's presentation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Namibia Burke, proud parent of three beautiful daughters who attend public schools, Camden Public Schools, traditional schools. I'm here to speak to the transformation slash dismantling of public education. If you have the required 51% parental support to move forward with Renaissance schools, as per the Urban Hope Act, then why are Mastery and uncommon representatives contacting parents with multiple calls and visits? Why is Mastery hosting a private dinner at McGraw School right now during the Board of Education meeting to woo our parents? I told my children that, and the comment that was made, Alani, what did you tell me that was?
That was bribing.
Speak up, babe.
That was bribing.
Bribing. That's what she told me. And if a 10-year-old can figure that out, we can figure that out. That's bribing. I would like to know who authorized Mastery and uncommon to access confidential contact information and data found on Genesis. I would like to know why parents are being told that their child will lose their slot in public education if they don't sign on to Renaissance schools. Your current example of Renaissance school at work, Palm Point, is an example of modern-day segregation. Renaissance school on one side, traditional school on the other side in the same building, unequal renovations, unequal resources in the same building. Separate but unequal, blatant disrespect and a violation of civil rights. And yet, there has not been any discussion about cream school, school in my neighborhood. For a home marking period, children have been eating breakfast in a school that is not fit for occupation. Students are being bused to three different schools for a home marking period, abbreviated school days, losing two hours of teaching and learning each day. Separate and unequal. Lack of resources because of water damage, and I'd like to know how are you providing equal support to traditional schools? I'm a parent who has choice, and I choose public education.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Barfield.
Good evening, superintendent, board. I think I'm kind of, you know, confused and, again, concerned in reference to this division that I've seen in reference to how the district have handled this whole Renaissance charter school. I think that's why you see a lot of kind of like animosity here in the district. But what I have a question to ask you, superintendent, even in reference to the process of how everything has gone in reference to this Urban Hope Act, and the fact that the district started off, when you came in, was in reference to dealing with the waiver. The Camden commitment, I would think, should have been based around the waiver and the request from the state in reference to having some time to improve the school district, when it seems that we have went to a totally different direction, and the fact that we've had, we were supposed to have the racks, that a lot of the things that you're trying to put in place, they've already did that work, and, you know, documentation as far as the PAM being a part of that process, even when it comes down to the curriculum. And now, even as going back to this last two days, going to the parent-teacher conference and seeing that, that we don't have a social studies curriculum, we don't have a science curriculum, the books, it's like the same things that we've been talking about for, you know, the last so many years, is still going on, even if we're talking about improving, you know, what's already here. So I think it's unfair, again, that we're in this situation where, of course, you know, we all, like she said, we all for better education for our children, but when are we going to start dealing with and focus and put the same kind of energy that, that the district is going around during all these town hall meetings promoting Mastery and uncommon with this falsified documentation, and deal with what's going on in this district? It's like I asked last month in reference to the New Jersey CUSAC. The CUSAC report is definitely outlined the fact that our lack of alignment with our curriculum, and still to this moment, going through my parent-teacher conference yesterday, it's like, no social studies, no science, you know, even the curriculum that you're trying to use now, which is a Mastery curriculum, Engage New York, that's a Mastery curriculum, and if you research that, I don't think anybody's really researched that. And if you research that, I don't think anybody's really researched that, but the feedback I'm getting from teachers is, you know, how long is it gonna take to try to implement that? So again, it's like we continue to tear the district down to make it look like it's not doing nothing, but yet we wanna promote these new schools who have no data to, to compare to. So how are we selling something we can't compare to and then we're tearing down and we're not supporting the district that, um, that's already here? So again, I would like to know some information.
Sir, Mr. Barfield, your time is up, sir. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Kathleen Murphy. Kathleen Murphy?
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Murphy. I teach at East Camden Middle and I'm proud to be saying that I teach there. I'm a product of Camden. I grew up right here in Kramer Hill. I'm a special ed teacher. I teach the BD class. You've come, you've been in my school and you've come past and you didn't even know that that was a BD class. Why? Cause we're on point. I don't have kids running out in the hall. I have a degree in special ed, in elementary ed from Holy Family University. It's to my understanding that the Teach for America replacements don't have that same credentials or that certification in special ed. I've been here for 15 years. I haven't had one of my student loans pardoned. So I'm not here for the $50,000 to $100,000 that are gonna be knocked off in two years just to have somebody else recycle in and take my kids. So I wanna know, what are you gonna do with my kids, with my boys, my 11 boys? If in fact they act out one day at Mastery or Charter, or if they curse or knock over a chair, or God forbid, they get in a fight, are you gonna kick them out? Are you gonna wait until October until the funds have been transferred? And then kick them out? I work hard in my job. I take pride in my job. Ask any of my students.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, uh, Angie Lars Sabu?
Anwar.
Is it Anwar? It's S-A-B. Is that you, sir? Sabri, my apologies.
Anwar Sabri, 41-year Camden resident, product of the school district. My mother was a former school teacher. All four of her sons went through the Camden School District. Now all 12 of our grandchildren are going through the school district. Now, I was already upset before I came up here, but, you know, uh, I'll calm down now. Uh, I'm gonna touch on the subject that Ms. Burke came up here to talk to about, the school transformation. Now, we have everybody up here talking about choice. Okay, we're gonna talk about that right now. Henry L. Bonza School, I take personal offense to this because I was a student of Bonza School in the direction of Ms. Dorothy White. Uncommon, okay? East Camden Middle School, McGraw, Malina, Whittier School, whatever happened to Lanning Square? What happened to Lanning Square? Cause we're talking about choice, right? You should be ashamed of yourself. Now, lis- listen up, everybody. They said, what does this mean for the students and teachers in these schools? Number one, the first thing they say, "All students served, including those with special needs and English language learners." They're not being served now? New leadership team with proven history. Proven to who? Who ever heard of Uncommon? Who did Mastery prove themselves to? You really not gonna tell me that kid proved themselves to anybody, cause where'd they come from? Significant renovations based on community feedback. I think you're putting the cart before the horse. Because the community feedback will tell you, we want the renovations now to the schools that we have, not the charter schools. That's renovation according to community feedback. Community feedback is what the real choice is. Did you ask any of these people? Did you ask any of the parents? Did you ask any of the teachers? That's what choice means. Since we're talking about choice, right? Were you asked? No, nobody asked you anything. That's what choice is. "All students stay in the building and attend brand-new buildings." Yeah, okay, all right, whatever. "All students are guaranteed an interview, seniority rights, and district jobs." Okay. The student board members, I wanna, I wish everybody here, if you could give these young people a round of applause. Because you know why? You people are under attack. You understand? You are our students and you young people are under attacks. You better fight for your right to your education because the people that are supposed to be representing you are not representing you. Choice is the elected school board, not the appointed school board. That's what choice is. And you people should all be ashamed of yourself, claiming that you represent the, the minds and...
Nicole Goodman?
The benefit of these children.
Thank you. Nicole Goodman?
Good evening. I have a lot to cover, so I can't afford to waste seconds greeting everyone on that stage. It's rumored that 25 security officers will be laid off. It is with great hopes that this decision is not being based on the recent false reported evaluations. Please note, the numbering on those evaluation forms are inaccurate. More important, who is qualified within the security department to evaluate a person's emotional maturity? In reference to the Camden Commitment Promise, number three, bullet one, launching a district-wide initiative, when were case managers going to be informed of this information? Especially taking into consideration that we only seen our director twice this entire school year. Jill Traynor, that's her name. Does educational support include LDTCs, psychologists, speech therapists? Because we still have vacancies. Pine Point, we didn't receive our speech therapist until January. We're still short special ed teachers. We still have inclusion teachers with only one teacher in the classroom all year. So I say to Mastery parents, charter schools, Uncommon, wherever you from, if you're not from a traditional public school, please know that I have friends where their children graduated from LEAP Academy. They went to Highland High School and they had to get tutoring. So by no means, don't think that these schools are outperforming us. They're not. They're only measuring below us. Also, parents, also, parents, please know that if you're not satisfied or happy with instruction or the academic, uh, the academic initiatives that are in your classrooms, your fight is not with us, the educators. Your fight is with the leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fahim Len, Fahim Len? Is Fahim, is it Len or Leah? Fahim Len? Going, okay. Uh, next speaker is Dee Turner Lewis. That was a mistake. No Dee Turner Lewis. Okay, going once, okay. Kay Waters, Kay Waters?
Good evening. I knew Jamir Bullock. I don't want to, uh, you know, get too sentimental, but I do miss him. I'm here tonight to say that it has been a propaganda smear that your child cannot get a quality education in a regular public school and I'll keep saying it until it can't be said anymore. My nephew, Harvey Mills, current sophomore student at Rutgers University. For any parent who thinks you can't get a quality education in the city of Camden, he went through every public school in the city of Camden and was number one in everyone and needed no remedial work when he went to Rutgers on a scholarship academically. All right. He's still there. Called me the other day, all right? So just wanna let those parents who think that they know what they know when they don't know because they've been bamboozled and hoodwinked, run amok? All right. We have students in Wilson who want to go to college and have been accepted. Will you, as the superintendent, promote those students who currently have been accepted to college on the CCSD television station so that everyone can see them along with the Camden High students? The quality of an education, excellent education you say is not in the school should not be, if the quality of the education is not here at Woodrow Wilson or Camden High, is not preparing students to go to college, how come they're being accepted? Race has been a factor in all of the decisions and that's the elephant in the room. That's the 800-pound gorilla in the room. Race, the lit, one of the parents just got finished saying, segregation? Uh, uh, now and forever? That was mentioned by a guy named George Wallace. It still exists. I'm deciding that an uninformed urban parent can easily be persuaded to accept options that appear to be great, but the charter movement started in Minnesota and was designed to take down public education and secure those dollars. Just follow the money. I also had an anti-violence event at Woodrow Wilson on the 13th and the 18th.
Your time is up.
I invited both the...
Sir, your time is up. Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, speaker is L. Miller. Sir, your time is up. Can you, sir, your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments. Our next speaker is L. Miller. Sir, I wanna ask you one more time. You were given three minutes. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is L. Miller. Mr. Waters, could you please respect Ms. Miller and give her her time? Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. Horace Mann promoted the concept that children should be given a public education and a democracy, communication, and empowerment between the parents and the school. Education was not set for a profit. It appears that Camden is trying to dissolve the public education and the parents have no say. This would never happen in the suburbs because the parents wouldn't tolerate it. Where can these parents go? We have gone in reverse and the 60s are for naught. I believe it is time to listen and engage with parents. Save Camden schools would be a great starting point and leave profit out of the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Krista Goodman. Krista Goodman?
What I have to say is gonna touch upon what a lot of people said and I think I might be saying it a different way and I'm gonna kinda call out the elephant in the room. Last month, there was an article in the Washington, uh, in the Washington Post and without going into a lot of detail about it, it says that in Newark, which has gone through all the things that Camden are now going through, that the test scores are no better and in some cases are worse than what they were before one Newark. They say that the community is alienated. They say that, uh, you know, Kami Anderson needs to be outed, but she just keeps on coming back. I think that since a lot of you don't have backgrounds in education, that... I wanna get through what I wanna say, that you may not be familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs, which I think directly correlates to what goes on in Camden. Um, you know, students need to have their basic needs met and me as an early childhood educator, where my kids have no, they, they just know, they don't know to not be honest. So when they come in and say, "My mom made me sleep on the floor last night because Chris Berry was getting shot up" or "I love Manny's sandwiches," um, they have to have their basic needs met before they can learn. So, you know, kids can't learn without their basic needs and rather than focus on the fixes that may look good to, some parents or may look good to people who aren't in education, what we need to really do is look at generational poverty. And, and how do we fix that and how do we work on that? Um, that's what makes it hard to learn. That's what makes it hard for students to focus. I don't have the answers, but what's going on here is no answer. Sorry, my page is moving slowly. I wanted to close with that I believe that you're a good person. I believe that you have the children's interest in heart, but I also think that you need to have the courage to do what is right and not do what you're told to do. And as a Camden resident, I'm wondering if, where you plan on sending your son to a charter or a public school? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fadala Ali Arzir. And again, forgive me for the mispronunciation. Fadala Azzi Arzir. Okay, Iris Rodriguez. It's coming, I'm sorry, okay.
I'm a single parent. My sons go to Forest Hill. Forest Hill is not, matter of fact, Mr. Corby, he's not in tune with the school. I have physically got removed from Forest Hill because they cannot take me, not letting my sons be attacked or not knowing what current situations are going on. If your son, your child falls, you as a parent should know about it. The school nurse should not make any determination by herself. I think if that person is in, in charge of students, you as a superintendent, you're not doing your job. Your job is to secure or to watch out for these kids. From whatever time I give my sons to you, I'm entrusting them to you. For one thing, only education. Do not bribe my sons with anything but a good grade if they deserve it. You see what I'm saying? The Board of Education, they're not in tune. They're not in tune. And it's not their fault. You know why it's not their fault? Because if they're not gonna be at these schools every day and look and see what the conditions are, me personally, I've baked probably 600 cookies for Forest Hill because I wanted to, because these are my sons. There's no way that a student should be jumped on school property. You as a superintendent, Mr. Corby as a principal, has no knowledge of it. Mr. Dawson for Forest Hill, he should actually be the principal. You need a person who's in tune with these students as well as these parents. That gentleman right there said, fathers need to be fathers. How are we gonna be fathers if this school or particularly Forest Hill... How are we going to be fathers if this school or particularly Forest Hill does not want a parent that is not going to be submissive? I will not let someone abuse mine, I'm not going to let them abuse theirs. So within that, it's supposed to be 50/50. So from 8:00 in the morning till 2:55, my, my sons are your care. There's no need to say, okay, no, no child left behind, they should have never been passed. Treat them, educate them the right way. If they need treatment, if they need guidance, guess what? Give the parent the option. Me personally, I went to Forest Hill today. I asked for my son to be tested at Ralph Molina in 2013. There's still no IP test. That's only after I've got kicked off of Forest Hill School Property. When I go to Forest Hill, police have to come. If they feel as though that they're threatened because I'm not going to be passive, I'll accept it. But until I decide to move, my kids will be in public school because guess what? Sheltering them away isn't what they need. They need a chance to survive. They can look at those people behind, y'all, y'all, listen, they're the future.
Excuse me, sir, your time is up, thank you.
It's all good.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Iris Rodriguez.
Good evening, board members, superintendent. First, you took about 3,000 teachers away from our schools across the board. Can't hear me? How about now? Okay. Now you want to replace our public schools with charter schools, right? Not only do you want to change them into charter schools, but you also are replacing all of our teachers. All of our teachers that dedicated long hours, nights, who have built rapport with these students. Maybe that's all that they have, maybe that's the only positive thing that they have that you're going to take away from them. At the end, you're telling the teachers it was all for nothing. And then, when you change them into charter schools, who are you bringing in? New people that are not from Camden, right? What do they know about Camden? How can they relate to the city? Nothing, they can't. And then, parents for greater public schools, why are they being paid to be here? Can you answer that? Why do they have a bus? Why can't we go around the city of Camden with a bus picking up parents? I know some parents don't care, but I do. My son, he's going to speak, he wanted to speak, his name's Ray, he's, he's nine. He makes honor roll every marking period. He's in third grade, he reads, reads on a fifth grade level. Don't tell me we can't do it. Don't replace it, fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Leah Griffin or Griffith, Leah Griffin or Griffith? Is it Leah Griffith here? Okay, next is Roy Jones. It's either Roy or Ray Jones.
I just want to make a, kind of give my, since we have the Camden Commitment Plan, I think we should rename it the Camden Lack of Commitment Plan. And by that, I mean, after 41 years of complete underfunding of the school district, 41 years the state has underfunded the Camden School District. Not 10, not 7, 41 years. And for 20 years, the state of New Jersey managed the Camden School District. So wherever the Camden School District is, it's, it's on the backs of the state of New Jersey. And on that back, on, in that situation of failure, they would send a superintendent without certification, without a master's degree, without a doctor's degree, to turn around the most troubled school district in the nation. That is not a prescription for success. If I need a heart operation, I'm not going to the nurse for my operation, I'm going to a heart specialist. And what Camden need is a real superintendent. So there has been a lack of commitment by the state as it relates to public education here in the city of Camden. The fact that we have an unelected school board is undemocratic. It's completely undemocratic. Out of 37 school districts in Camden County, this is the only one that has no elected school board members to serve the interests of parents, teachers and students. This is the only district. There's a lack of commitment to public education in the city of Camden. $72 million, as much as $150 million has been transferred, you should hear that clearly, $150 million has been transferred to charter schools at the expense of public schools. So do you expect public schools to turn around if you've taken out nearly $150 million and transferring that to charter schools that are unproven in the city of Camden? That is not a lack of commitment, that is not commitment, Mr. Paimon, that's a lack of commitment. Suspensions, terminations, layoffs and forced outs. 200 to 400 teachers, experienced teachers have been laid off or forced out of this district. That is not commitment to public education in this city. To transfer or utilize the Laney Square West Public Schools money, new construction monies to build the Norcross Charter Schools-
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Our next speaker is Hope Funches.
Yes, I looked you in your eyes and I asked you, that when you went into this, did you go in it with God? I asked you, I asked you, did you put God first? I asked you, did you pray about this? You told me you did. Now I'm asking you, what God are you serving?
Thank you, our next speaker is Michael Stargell. Michael Stargell? No, Michael Stargell. Shirley Irizarry. Shirley Irizarry? Ms. Irizarry, not here.
My name is Ray Pacheco, I'm nine years old and I am third grade. I don't want my God to be taken over by charter schools, all the teachers are nice, I don't want to change that. And instead of new teachers, I want the teachers that are already there. I make honor roll every marking period, I read on a fifth grade reading level. When I go to college, I'm going to UCLA, I'm going to be an FBI agent and I am from Camden.
Thank you. Next and final speaker is Rashine Hammond. Is it Rashine Hammond or Hammond? Mr. Superintendent, that was our last speaker.
Great, thank you.
You came in to sign up, we recall there were only 30 people that would be able to speak. A number of people have not spoken because they left. Now, isn't it proper and fair that the people who want to speak are now able to sign the sheet?
Yes, 30.
So, a couple, couple things here, look, I, you and I just had this conversation before the meeting started, two things. First, when I first came in, the protocol was that there was a 30 speaker limit with a two-minute max speaking limit. And what we heard, what we heard from various community members was that two minutes isn't enough, so we extended two minutes to three minutes. And so what was a 60-minute public commentary session became 90 minutes, so we increased about 50%. We also cut the sign-off list at a certain hour and tonight we extended it to 7 o'clock because there were a number of different parent meetings that were happening throughout the city. I'm saying this to you, that not only have we increased the speaking time by 50%, but we also extended the time by which we allow people to sign up and unfortunately, you came in after that time. Okay, but the speaker list was full, the speaker list was full. Look, like, if we create exceptions to the rule, it becomes an endless spiral. I appreciate your advocacy, Mr. Walker, but we need to move on, I need to respond to the public comments and that'll culminate the meeting. I'm sure we'll see you at the next meeting and so, I, I appreciate you, okay? Like, we need, we need to move on.
Sir, 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 you're not being given the opportunity to speak, please have a seat, sir. Please do not disrupt the meeting or we may ask you to be removed by the police, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, you're, you're already standing at the podium, if there's a couple of quick things you want to say, go ahead.
Just a couple of things. A few of us went up to Trenton and we, we sat in front of the, the State Supreme Court. And, and it's important that the people in Camden know that in, consistent with the decisions that have been made by the Supreme Court, for example, the Dred Scott decision which said that black people had no right, that white people had to respect or acknowledge, we have no rights. The school board as it is, the advisory board as it is constructed is unconstitutional. They have stripped us of our right to elect our school board, that is voter disenfranchisement. Our mayor and our city council are denying us the right to petition our government. People, there's an election coming up, fire the mayor, fire city council, they work for us and then we can change the construct of the people here.
So, there were a number of comments about students with disabilities and the Renaissance schools. I've said it before, so I'll reiterate the point, when we say all students, it does mean all students. And so, there are students with IEPs that require self-contained setting, whatever the case may be, the Renaissance schools are required, this is a very unique characteristic that they have, that it doesn't apply to charter schools in that there's no contract with charter schools like there is Renaissance schools. So all students does mean all students. Mr. Frazier read off some statistics, which I'd be happy to sit down with you and explain it point by point. What you're referring to is the ELC report, which grossly mischaracterized reality. And so what they were sedating was that if you look at the Renaissance schools, I'll give you one example of how they mischaracterize the facts. They compared kindergarten special ed rates at Renaissance schools to district K to 12 averages. Anyone who's close to the special education IP process would tell you that you have very low classification at kindergarten, so you need to do an apples to apples comparison and if you compare the Renaissance schools kindergartens to the district school kindergarten rates, they're not only at the same level, in some cases, they're actually above the district average. And if you look at the Renaissance schools today with their latest numbers, because kindergarten students continue to get classified over the course of kindergarten, their numbers are continuing to go up. So we do believe, and especially when you look at the free lunch rates, they are serving needy students and they are taking that responsibility very seriously. Mr. Ron, Mr. Zahn, you had a comment about what I stated about the overall evaluation process, I don't know if he's still here. There you are. I wasn't stating that we're going to unilaterally change IEPs, we're going to abide by the process that's in place. My point was, we are, we are going to do the evaluation that should have been happening every single year, it hasn't been happening. So I'm acknowledging the fact that it hasn't been happening, most of the years it hasn't been happening wasn't on our watch. So, it's something that we're taking seriously, we're of course going to factor in parent input and that was a point that I made, that it is intended to empower families. There was a comment about master, Renaissance schools in general having access to contact information from Genesis, they don't. It is a fact that they do not have access to Genesis. So, I, wherever, wherever someone believes that may be the case, bring that to us, I can guarantee you though, they do not have access to Genesis. Mr. Barfield, you made some comments about curriculum. We could talk for hours about curriculum. We have looked at Engage New York, we will likely borrow some elements of it, we are not just going to copy and paste Engage New York, we've looked at curriculum across the country and we've had a number of really productive conversations with our teacher roundtable about curriculum, where they've given us input on how we can best roll it out and how we can best train our teachers. We've consulted with Washington DC in particular, they have some of the nation's foremost experts on curriculum, they've been at this for a while, a lot longer than we have and so we're trying to borrow from the best and brightest minds out there. And so we should continue that conversation with you about what Washington DC, what Engage New York and other good curriculums out there have to offer Camden. Ms. Nicole Goodman made a comment about vacancies and security guards, so I'm not sure where this rumor started about 25 security guards being let go, that's a rumor, we're certainly going through the budget and staffing process currently, no decisions have been made, they, any, you know, all staff will be notified before May 15th, but I can confirm that that number is certainly a number I haven't heard before. And as it relates to vacancies, yes, we continue to have some vacancies in the high-need staffing areas, it's consistent with other school districts across the state and country, the vacancies that she highlighted were the ones you would predict, special education, English language learners. We are continuing to search far and wide for qualified and certified special education English language learners. Mr. Keith Waters made a comment about promoting our students on CCD TV. So, maybe you and I are watching different stations, but we are constantly promoting our students on our, on Channel 19. It's a responsibility we take very seriously and almost exclusively devoted, I shouldn't say almost exclusively, it is exclusively devoted to our district schools. And whether we're promoting Chanel Perry's accomplishments as an alumni now at Clemson or whatever the case may be, we are constantly doing that and I hope those of you that do watch Channel 19 can corroborate that. There, there were just certainly a number of comments about anxieties and disagreements and concerns and some outright anger about certain decisions that were made. I want to just reiterate the point that from the beginning of my tenure here, 100-day listening tour to today, I have always acknowledged that there are certain elements of this job where not everyone was going to agree with me, not everyone was going to agree with the board and all of us in the audience, at times we disagree with each other. And the purpose of the Renaissance School partnerships was not to bring in organizations to profit, they are nonprofit organizations. But it was to ask for help in areas where we believe we need the help and I know some of you all may disagree with the way that we've gone about this, but we cannot continue to allow our schools to send from fifth grade on to middle school, fewer than one out of five students who are reading and writing and doing math on grade level. And so, these changes are certainly hard, are certainly complex and that's the reason that we try to be as visible and accessible and communicative as possible to talk through them, acknowledging the fact that we're not going to agree on every last issue. But if we go and just continue to do the same thing we've been doing and expect something different, we're not going to get there. We have to rethink the way that we are providing a high-quality education for our students and families and it is not the point of finger, as I've stated endlessly. We have some remarkable teachers here, but it is a systemic failure and what the Renaissance schools provide us at five schools that really do need the support the most is a fresh start with partners. And we have partners in pre-K, private providers, it's not as controversial in pre-K for reasons maybe someone else can explain to me. But when it comes to K to 12, I understand that there is a certain visceral reaction here, but it is coming from a good place, it is asking for help, it is asking for renovations that we cannot do within the district. If anyone can point to a pathway to renovate all of our schools that we haven't thought of, please let us know because we haven't figured it out yet. And Gary, I've talked to you about this, I've talked to you about this ad nauseam, we have exhausted the pathway to bringing in capital through the SDA, we are getting a disproportionate share of what is currently available in the School Development Authority's pot of money. So, look, I just want to acknowledge the elephant in the room, I'm not trying to, to hide from this conversation and I will continue to engage on this conversation and I appreciate everyone's advocacy. everyone's advocacy, thank you all very much. That concludes the meeting.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
You've been watching the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education. Join us next month for the regular monthly meeting of the Camden Advisory Board of Education.